This is my first time using a computer.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Bowlen, for the impromptu leading of that pledge. We leave a moment of silence. Please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Patrick Zilly, father-in-law of Emily Zilly, Rogers High School chemistry teacher. Terrence Topa, stepfather of Melissa Henry, Pell teacher, and cousin of Christine Downs, TMS clerk typist. Arthur LaPlante, father of John Horseman, Rogers High School teacher. Kevin Fitzgerald, cousin of Maureen Grimes, Pell nurse teacher. Theodore Tamlovich, uncle of Nancy Noonan, Rogers High School teacher. Mary Rose Hickson, aunt of Sarah Cludia, Rogers High School nurse teacher. George Thurston, grandfather of Alexandria Nakris, TMS teacher. Cora Brule, grandmother of Brett Brule, Pell teacher, and Mary Anita DeWitt, retired community activist. We'll now have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. So this evening, I'm not sure if, I don't think, I know we have Maggie Cohen. I see Meg Maradu on there. I think Maggie's got prom festivities. I don't know. I don't see Maggie, so.
Mr. Gomes, Maggie is not here this evening.
All righty, so Meg, it's all yours. I understand you'll be a guest next year as well, so welcome.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Hello, everybody. My name is Megan Maradu, and I am the newly elected president of the Student Council at Rogers High School. This week is RHS Senior Week, so today they did the walkthrough through Pell, Thompson, and Rogers. Yesterday, they did the car parade. Today, tonight is actually senior prom from 7:00 to 11:00 at the Bull Inn in downtown Newport. And graduation is this Thursday at 6:00 o'clock at Toka Field, and that will be live streamed by the Audio Visual Productions on YouTube by David Connell, the graphics design teacher at Rogers High School. Newport Community School is still holding their virtual tutoring, so any student can sign up via email. And the email is in the RHS announcements that goes out to students, faculty, staff, and is on the NPSR.net website. The Class of 2022 will be holding their annual elections this June 18th for all the positions, President, Vice President, Treasury Secretary, and all three spots on Prom Committee. School sports are coming to a close with the playoffs soon ahead. The baseball team played two games this weekend, lost one on Saturday, two.
I think Meg may have froze up there. Meg, are you there?
Coming to a close, and us teachers and students are really trying to work hard, so thank you.
Hey, Meg, we lost you for a minute, but we're glad you're back. So anybody have any questions or comments on anything that Meg reported on?
So who won the baseball games? That's when we lost you.
Rogers won the one on Sunday, and they lost the one on Saturday.
Okay, it's a split. Okay, thanks.
Oh, look at that baseball terminology. Anybody else? Any questions for Meg? All right, well, we're glad. Congratulations on your selection or election to President, and we look forward to seeing you next year at our school committee meetings.
Thank you. I actually have to go. I'm going to prom too, so.
All right. All right, have fun. Take care. Have a good night. Thank you. So that leads us into recognition and certificates of achievements. We have one left over from last year, recognition of the Skills USA competition winner. James Corley could not be with us last month, so he is here with us this evening. And he participated in Skills USA, and he earned a bronze medal for carpentry. I know Mr. Young isn't here, so James, if you want to just congratulations on your placement representing the NAC Tech program, do you want to give us a little quick summary of what it involved and what you did in your competition and to achieve the medal?
Yeah, so me, I went up to believe, I forgot where I went, but me and my teacher, Mr. Ferrer, we went up there, and they give you a little plans, and you got to read the plans, find your dimensions, and then ultimately go ahead and start the construction and building your base and the walls, and then frame everything up with multiple windows and doors in it, and just it was a cool experience, so thank you.
Well, great. Thanks for being here tonight. We're glad you represented us and did so well, and congratulations again. Thank you. Anybody from the school committee have any questions for James?
So in simple terms, you built a house, is that right?
Yeah, pretty much, it's a mini one.
That's excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just want to say congratulations. I could not build a house. I wouldn't know the first thing. I could just hide my drill before the meeting started.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for being here, James, and congratulations again.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. So then the next recognition is to some JROTC cadets. On Saturday, May 22nd, our cadets traveled to St. Mary's Chapel and Cemetery to plant flags, I believe, in preparation for Memorial Day. The committee will, we're going to recognize cadets who are pursuing a career in the military after they graduate. I believe I see most of them. I know some may not be here. I know Allison isn't as we go down, or she may join in. Do we have most of everybody who is coming? Do we know? This is Nash.
We do, Mr. Gomes. They're all here except Anthony. Anthony was on earlier.
Okay, maybe he'll
Go ahead.
Maybe he'll pop back on. Maybe he just lost signal or.
Vlad Air is here.
Okay. So I'll just recognize him, and then I'll have Colonel Corbett can give us a few words about the cadet. So we have with us tonight Justin DiCosta, who will be entering the Navy as a Navy master at arms. And we have Aiden Frost, who will be also going into the Navy as a hospital corpsman. And we have Lucian Forest, I'm sorry, Lucian Sullivan, who will be entering the Navy as an IT specialist. Anthony Forrest, who will be entering the Army as a tactical generator repairman. Angel Cruz, who will be going to Norwich University on an Air Force ROTC. And Vladimir Mendez Montero, who will be attending Norwich University as well on an Air Force ROTC. And the last cadet to recognize is Cadet Allison Branchfield, who will be attending Purdue Polytechnic Institute to study computer science and cybersecurity. Cadet Branchfield served as captain of the Cyber Patriot Team. She also will be graduating from Rogers High School in three years, and also during the three years has 57 credits from CCRI in a dual enrollment program through the PTECH, I believe. And she will earn her associate's degree while working on her bachelor's degree. So congratulations to all you cadets for your hard work and good luck in your military endeavors as you go forward. And Colonel Corbett, if you'd like to say a few words about the cadets, and then we can have any questions or comments from the school committee.
Well, I like to say we have great cadets. The cadets are ambassadors to the program, and it really takes a heart of service to join the military and want to serve our great nation. So I just wanted to thank those on the school committee and the leadership team within the school district for allowing them to be highlighted tonight, because I like to sing their praises. Why don't let, maybe let the cadets introduce themselves and tell us about their plans? If we have time, time permitted?
Sure, we do. Excellent idea. Go right ahead.
Anthony did just join us, so we got a full house.
All right, Anthony, glad you could come back, so. Why don't we start? I'll just go down the list, and I'll introduce you, so it's easier. Justin DiCosta, if you'd like to introduce yourself, say a few words, and then we'll move along the list.
Hi, I'm Justin DiCosta. I sign and listen to the Navy as a master at arms, which basically is the Navy's version of military police and security forces. So basically, my job is to make sure everyone is safe and secure while serving on base.
Thank you. Then we'll go to Aiden Frost.
I'm Aiden Frost. I joined the US Navy as a hospital corpsman. So essentially, what my job will be is to make sure sailors and Marines, if they ever get dinged up, they have someone to fall back to, to help them out. I joined this job because I like to say the Marines don't have their own medic.
Okay, you're well prepared to go into your future endeavor with that comment. Then we'll do Lucian Sullivan.
Hello, my name's Lucian Sullivan. I joined the Navy as an IT systems technician. So I'll be working on different technical systems in the Navy in either the networking field or programming field.
You, and then Angel Cruz. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it. Poor Anthony came back. I skipped Anthony. So Anthony Forrest, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Anthony, and I'll be joining the National Guard. I'll be working on power generators.
Thank you. Then Angel Cruz.
Hello, I'm Angel Cruz. I will be attending Norwich University, enrolled in the Air Force ROTC program. I'll be studying a bachelor's in engineering, and upon graduation from Norwich, will commission as an officer in the Air Force.
Congratulations. And then Vladimir? Vlad, I think I see on your screen, so.
Yes, hi, I'm Vladimir. Yes, I'm at the University this fall to serve in the Justice and be an officer in the Air Force.
Congratulations. I actually had a nephew who went to Norwich University and recently retired from the Marines as a first lieutenant, so. It's a well, good education there. You'll do well, so congratulations and good luck. And I don't think Allison has jumped on. She's probably on her way to prom or getting ready. So Allison, obviously, we're very proud of her and the work she's done, and she's accomplished quite a bit in three years, so kudos to her. And I know.
With your permission, Chairman Gomes, I'm going to dismiss the cadets. Note about Vladimir. Vladimir received the Lieutenant Governor's Leadership Academic Leadership Award last night at the State House, so.
If you could, if you could just hold him one minute, I want to see if any of the school committee members would like anything, and then we can dismiss him. I know Ms. Winslow was the sponsor behind having this recognition tonight, I believe, so.
Right, and I just have one more thing on Vlad. Along with the Lieutenant Governors, I understand he's very creative in creating bridges. And I saw that announcement today, too, that you did very well in creating your popsicle stick bridge.
Thank you, yeah.
Congratulations.
So I'll start with Ms. Winslow, and then we'll move around anybody else, but I know Ms. Winslow's idea was the recognition for the flag placement, so Ms. Winslow will go right ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just, yeah, I did want to say, you know, I admire your courage, you know, and your choice to pursue this path. You don't have to, but you're doing it, and also wanted to take, you know, thank you for taking time out of the holiday weekend to, you know, remember the veterans and remind people that it's not just a three-day weekend. It's, there's a real, there's a history there and a reason we're taking a moment to rest. And I think it's impressive when I see young people commit to service. So again, just congratulations on your scholarships, on all your academic achievements, on your, on your career. I think it'll take you a lot of places, and I'm proud.
All right, anybody else from the school committee like to say, Ms. Bowlen, go right ahead.
So just like Stephanie said, we're all very proud of you for taking this big leap, and I'm just one, it seems like there's many of you this year. Is that an unusual number? Or, you know, do we spark more interest? It just seems a lot are joining the military this year. Maybe Mr.
I see Colonel.
Officer in charge, yeah, Colonel can answer that.
I think they're looking for adventure in the screen time for a little while.
Is it more this year than other years that we've had join?
Typically, we have about two a year. This is a, this is a bump, a bump across.
Very good.
A lot of great young emerging leaders with hearts of service, so we're happy for them.
All righty, anybody else? If not, I'll allow the Colonel to dismiss, and thank you. Congratulations, cadets, and we look forward to hearing as you go out and represent Rogers, the Viking community in your military career, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Dismissed, and if you're going to the prom tonight, dance the night away.
Have fun. Take care. Thank you. All righty, I'll check in. I spoke just before the meeting with Mrs. Nash, but I do not believe we have any public comments still.
We do not have public comment, Mr. Gomes.
All righty, that moves us into our action items. And the first action item, 5.1 is request for approval of policy 4310, Human Resources Administrative Team Agenda of Meeting on the Second Reading. Is there a motion to approve the policy as presented this evening? I see Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And it's a second reading, so we obviously talked about it. Are there any questions regarding the policy? If I don't see any comments or questions, I'd ask Mrs. Nash for a roll call vote to approve the policy 4310 as presented this evening on the second reading.
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. 5-0.
All righty, thank you. The next policy is request for approval of policy 4400, Human Resources Administrators' Attendance at School Committee Meetings, again on the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Any questions or comments on 4400? I don't see any, so Mrs. Nash, you do a roll call vote to approve policy 4400 on the second reading this evening.
Sure, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. 5-0.
Thank you. The next one is policy 4150. This is Human Resources Administrative Organization Legal Counsel. I believe we had this on the first reading last month, and there was some debate and discussion. It went back to the policy committee, so. Dr. Flowers, if you just want to give us a brief overview of the changes that were made and the updates, and then, oh, I'm sorry, but we need a motion to approve first. Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Then I'll have Dr. Flowers give us an overview of the changes and additions made.
Sure enough. Okay, this is Administrative Organization Regarding Legal Counsel. And if you have your copies in front of you or on your screen, you'll see how some paragraphs were deleted because they really were not pertinent to that particular policy. How the genesis of that doesn't, doesn't really matter. Your third paragraph was just eliminating one word at the beginning, and it states, but when legal questions arise concerning school committee actions and responsibilities, and it jumps down to say, "The decision to seek legal advice or assistance shall," and I have to go down, look myself here, "be made by the superintendent or school committee chairperson." And then inserting in bold, "The school committee members shall inform the school committee chairperson when seeking legal advice or assistance." Responses by the legal counselor, actually, it should be counsel, that I think was a, maybe an autocorrect, to such inquiries will ordinarily be made through the chairperson. And additionally, when legal questions arise concerning employees, students, or other matters related to the operations of the Newport Public School Department, the superintendent or administrator specifically authorized by the superintendent shall seek the advice or assistance of the legal counsel." It's bearing in mind that's their venue. And another sentence was deleted because it was redundant, and then all the rest stays the same. It just clarifies who would contact the, our attorney in the event of questions or issues that have to be addressed.
Ms. Bowlen, I see you hand up. Go right ahead.
Yes, so thank you for changing the parts I was concerned about last that this, the entire committee, if appropriate, gets the results of that inquiry. So that, it says it goes to the, to the chair, but oftentimes, you know, it's of interest, you know, those results of that inquiry to the whole committee, and nowhere in this does it say something about.
The attorney would respond all. I believe, Mr. Galvin, there he is.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be careful with that in a policy. I would suggest that the superintendent's office and/or the chair arrange for that to happen, but I don't want to risk engaging in group emails and violating potentially the Open Meetings Act by doing it that way. So ultimately, the sharing of it can be done internally, but I don't want that to be a process or a routine that I would be involved with. I don't want to.
So not you, but can we have it so that the, that they, you know, share it when appropriate, you know? Because my only concern would be if it was a legal issue concerning a particular school committee member on a private matter, you know, pertaining, obviously, to the schools, but so how could we word that?
That should work. I have a suggestion. So looking at it and the way we do it, I agree. I think after the last, well, it's not the last paragraph. Last paragraph on page one says, "All legal opinions solicited by the committee or the superintendent are to be rendered in writing, except in emergency situations, with the understanding that such emergency opinions will be subsequently put into writing." I think their appropriate sentence would be, "The opinions then are to be shared with the school committee," or something along those lines. It takes, it takes a legal counsel out of distributing them to Mr. Galvin's point, and puts the onus on either myself or the superintendent or the chair mostly.
But how about, and distributed where appropriate, when appropriate, by the chair when appropriate? So that would give you, in case it was a personal, you know, someone was coming after somebody personally, or, you know.
That, yeah, because there are different variations.
So do we must say, oh, one sentence, opinions will be shared with the committee, the full committee, when appropriate?
Yeah.
Or if, if appropriate?
As appropriate.
As appropriate.
So, yeah, go right, we're going to have to, we'll have to make a motion to amend the policy as presented. But do we have a good sentence so that I know Kathy can take it down? Somebody want to give it, somebody want to give it a try? I think Stephanie had most of it.
Opinions will be shared with the full committee as appropriate.
Okay, so there's a motion made by, I'm going to say, a motion made by Ms. Winslow to add the sentence to the policy as presented. Is there a second to that motion, Ms. Boatright? Any discussion on that motion?
Did you, yeah, could you just read it again? So it'd be attached to the last sentence, correct?
Last sentence on page one.
Okay, maybe Kathy Nash could repeat it as to what she has.
I don't, did Kathy have it?
I can. I'm just toggling here between a couple of screens. Just give me one minute. That's okay. Okay, so we're adding to the second paragraph. That opinions.
It would be, I'm sorry to interrupt Kathy, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, the last paragraph on page one.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
We are adding the language, "Opinions will be shared with the full committee as appropriate."
Yeah, yeah. Everybody, oh, good, okay, so.
And one other, that one little thing in the halfway down where it says, "responses by the legal counsel." It should be C-O-U-N-S-E-L. The O-R is just deleted. That's just a typo. Is that?
Should be counsel instead of counselor.
Right.
The first folded section.
Oh, I see.
This just, yeah.
I was looking, I was looking at the wrong counsel. I couldn't figure it out. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to amend the policy. Could I, could we have a roll call vote to amend the policy as presented?
Certainly. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. 5-0.
So we have a, a motion has been passed to amend the policy as presented, and we still have a second and a motion to pass the policy as presented this evening. So a roll call vote to pass the policy on the first reading this evening as amended.
As amended. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. 5-0.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. That gets us through policies. 5.4 is a request for approval of agreement between Newport Public Schools and Advocacy Solutions. Is there a motion to approve the agreement as presented this evening?
Can I make a motion to approve, but with the change of 2020 to 2021, to have it approved as 2021 to 2022 school year, the whole way through? It just has the wrong dates. That's all.
I'm just going to see, Mr. Galvin, do we need, do we need to have a motion to amend it first? Or can we amend it as part of the motion to pass it this evening? I think you can amend it as part of the motion. Very good. Thank you.
And so to have, to be amended as that way, any place that that is written there, just to be amended is that.
So the motion made by Ms. Boatright is to approve the policy with the correction of the years to 2021, 2022 school year. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Dr. Flowers, okay? Any questions or discussions on this? Okay, Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
I have, I have an unrelated question, but that, I guess, is in general against a lot of our action items, and I didn't want to interrupt you as you were reading this out, but can I just ask? I see. I see, you know, there's a lot of things on here and like our last action item is the budget. The revised budget, and so I don't know, I, I just want to make sure that, um, like all the different items where, um, we, we have up for approval against the ESTR funding. And then the budget, which is also going to be using ESTR funding. I, I just want to make sure that we don't spend all the money tonight if we, um, if there are other initiatives that come up or more grant proposals that come through. So I just am looking for the superintendent or Mr. Goncalves' recommendation on, you know, should we do the budget first and then look at these, like work backwards against all these contracts? Maybe there's plenty of money because we have ESTR two. And so I just, I don't know how to really ask that. But we can, we can go back and, and finish up with the advocacy solutions if we need to do that before discussing other things.
If I can, um, just answer, good evening, school committee members. I'd just like to provide you some cover that we are only still budgeting for the second round of ESTR two, which is the smaller of the three buckets. So, um, and we're not spending all of the dollars tonight. As well as the fact that, um, we are accounting for them in two separate buckets. And we'll notice that throughout the various contracts. They're not all dumped into one, they're individualized and, and I believe they are explained as such.
Okay, thank you. And I just needed that reassurance out. You know, all these are great things, but how, you know, are there other things in the pipeline? And do we need to think about that as the summer goes? And I was just, you know, since we have a new amount from the city council now, just wanted to make sure we're on track. Okay, thank you.
So I do want to add, based on your question, just so you know that you don't get there. When we do get to the budget, uh, the finance subcommittee has asked that we not vote on it this evening. And we're gonna vote on that at a special meeting in a week. We just want, uh, some financing and the city to vote again. So when we get to the budget, we are gonna pull it and not vote on it for another. I did, didn't want to do, didn't want to do a bait and switch and get there and have you, you should have told me that five items ago, but.
I, I, I know, we just started going and then I, I saw the update today and, you know, there's just no time. So thank you, everyone, for helping me out on that.
Just, just wanted to be clear, so, nope, so. So we do have the, uh, motion to approve five point four, the request, uh, of the agreement between Newport Public Schools and Advocacy Solutions. Are there any other questions for the superintendent on the agreement, Ms. Winslow?
Yeah, thank you very much because, you know, I'm, I'm really passionate about, uh, communications in terms of community engagement and getting the message out and explaining what's going on in the schools. You know, if you don't, if you're not directly involved in the day to day, it can be hard to digest the information. So this is very exciting for me. But I think because we're using ESTR funds, I really wanted to make sure that there's immediate benefit for the students in this. Um, and I, and I'm wondering if Advocacy Solutions is, is willing to maybe tailor the proposal a little bit, continue to sit down with us and make it like a really student centric mission. Engaging the students and the families first and foremost, you know, focusing on internal communications as well as external communications. You know, I think that just ideas, you know, they could help, help us messaging on, um, you know, the, the breaking the stigma around mental health as kids are coming back into class and the school and maybe having a hard time or whatever has happened in their families this year. Or embracing diversity and inclusion and the importance of regular attendance. And, and, um, you know, how, how school is relevant to future career success. Um, and even soliciting parent and student voice in terms of developing new curriculum and class ideas and, and any, any policy for the schools are just helping to engage really the students and the families first in their school experience. Everything is, it, it's maybe just a subtle difference, but, um, not just sharing the news about Newport Public Schools, but getting a dialogue, an internal dialogue really flowing. That's my comment. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, Dr. Flowers?
You know, I just went through it, skimmed through it again, just to check. And we, we use that expression and we do, uh, student centered. And it just appears, it seems to me that everything there is directed toward what the school system is about, is, is student centered. I mean, even if you look at any project or program or whatever we have and that might mention, I don't care if it's the bricks and mortar or whatever else, it, it all contributes to the health and welfare and education of our students. So I think it's, I think we're pretty safe in, uh, supporting this, this particular item and a lot of other things too.
Hey, Ray, you're muted. I think you said me, right? Okay, um, I just wanted to say about a year and a half ago, we had a similar proposal. And we had to put it on the back burner because we needed to get to the families and the students directly. So I welcome this. I think it's gonna be a good thing. And I think it's gonna be very important also on some of the things you're talking, Stephanie, about, which is also highlighting some of the, um, you know, um, some of the movement that we're seeing within the school system to make that the community more knowledgeable about that, number one. And then I don't disagree with you about potentially trying to add in some things internal. I'm not sure necessarily that this is actually the vehicle to do that. I would leave that to, um, Colleen and Advocacy Solutions to determine whether that or just the administration of each building to be more involved in that. Cause they, they really did increase their internal student and parent communication significantly oh, since COVID began. So I want to thank them for that. Christopher, I think you're on there. I think, but anyhow, I think that's really done it. We've done a great job there, Colleen and team, but I think this is the next step, so, thank you.
All righty, any, any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, Ms. Snacks, could we have a roll call vote to approve the agreement as presented?
Sure, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero.
All righty. That brings us to, I gotta reduce my screen a little here, sorry. That brings us up to, uh, five point five is a request for approval of contract between Newport Public Schools and Compass USA Chartwells for food service contract. And is there a motion to approve the lunch contract as presented, Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Dr. Flowers? Are there any questions or discussions on the food contract? Ms. Boatright, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, um, Mr., uh, the, both between Becky and Mr. Goncalves, we have done a good job and I think it's gonna reduce some of that. I know I can't get that right, Colleen, but, um, I'm trying. I think it may reduce some of the cost because we're going on the state contract. So I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that as well, because I think that's a great step forward. And, um, maybe Mrs. Bowlen, you can talk a little bit about some of the key benefits.
Uh, sure. Well, first of all, this is the first time we'll, we'll have gone on the master price agreement. I think that's what they refer to it as, or the MPA. And I will say Chartwells has been, um, you know, stellar in what they've done for us since COVID started. You know, we had to make some sacrifices sometimes and more packaged foods than we wanted. But, um, it, it wasn't not easy at all to do what they've done during this entire, uh, you know, year and a half. And, um, they're going into this contract and they're gonna honor all the things that we had in our last contract in terms of, we had, um, a list of specialty items that we wanted to make sure that we had in place for our kids. Those will all be honored. And, um, this contract is for the term of one year of renewal. And then that gives our Health and Wellness Committee enough time to figure out the direction we want to head in terms of, of meals for kids. And also I would like to point out that next year, the US government, USDA has authorized free meals for all students. And this is something that's never been done before. And it's gonna be an incredible opportunity for all our kids at every school to, um, you know, receive these meals. So very excited about that, very excited about working with Chartwells again, you know, to provide, um, a really quality nutritional system.
All righty, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Jermaine, did you want some?
No, I'm sorry, I just wrote in the chat, I want to apologize. I've been kicked off a few times. I'm on my hotspot right now. The internet's down over here. Sorry about that.
Okay.
But I do understand what Ms. Winslow said, so I captured, I think.
All righty, any other questions or comments? Uh, if not, Ms. Snacks, could you do a roll call vote to approve the contract between Newport Public Schools and Compass USA for food service?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero.
Must be something with the internet down this part of town. I'm getting a little, having a little trouble here all of a sudden. But, um, so, uh, that brings us into five point, uh, five point six. And I'm gonna do, I think we did it last month, it worked pretty good. Five point six, five point seven, and five point eight, five point nine. All, uh, agreements, uh, and five point ten with Dr. Bean. Uh, so if we can group, uh, motion to group, uh, to approve five point six, five point seven, five point eight, five point nine, and five point ten, oh, I'm sorry, I gotta keep going, five point eleven as presented, uh, this evening. And then we can have discussion on them. They all involve Dr. Bean. Dr. Flowers, I see a motion. Is there a second, Ms. Boatright? Are there any questions or, and for Dr. Bean or anything Dr. Bean would like to say about any of these, um, agreements?
Kim, you're on mute.
You were muted, Kim. I don't know if you're trying.
Thanks.
There you go.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, yeah, the, the first one is, um, moving forward with the adoption of the high quality curriculum for K to five. Uh, we had, um, made the decision to move forward with that adoption. And then, um, we have a small cohort of teachers that are doing the, um, the science or reading training. So we'll, we'll keep plugging along at that. But, um, Tracy felt this was the, the right time to move forward with the adoption of the new curriculum. And, um, we've been meeting with the vendors and we are, um, we did a PD, um, overview at the last state PD and we already have them lined up to do the, um, bigger dive into the materials for September second, um, if this moves forward tonight. So that's the, um, inter-reading, uh, is the, the name of the curriculum. And this was part of the research we did last year with the K to five, um, group, uh, with Ed Reports in the Department of Ed.
Hold on, Dr. Bean, I think Ms. Winslow has a question, so go right ahead.
Sure, Stephanie.
Thank you. Sorry, I, I can't remember if we discussed this curriculum like about a year ago or not. I apologize because I meant to look up notes and I did not. But curious to know, like, they, the teachers have already selected this. Will it be implemented this fall or is it like another?
Yes, yes, yes.
We'll begin this fall with it.
It will be. We, we were, um, we were going to move forward with it this past fall. But Tracy felt based on, um, you know, going, um, with, you know, all the COVID issues and, um, that it was better to hold off a year. And we continued with our, um, with our older program. And, uh, and she, you know, she wanted to implement this fall.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I have just one question.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, just one question, do, or, or will this, um, is this the last piece to high quality curriculum? Or do we have to have other pieces added in math and science? Or is it just, is it mostly ELA? No, no, we, um, right now, we're in the middle of field testing at the middle in high school, um, with ELA. Two years ago, we did the research for K to five for math. So, um, this year, moving forward, we would want to start doing the research for six through 12 for math. And, um, and then the year out, we're gonna have to start looking at, um, the science. Okay, thank you. Ray, do you want me to keep moving forward?
Go right ahead, Dr. Bean.
Okay. The, the second, um, item is, uh, the approval for the renewal of Zello. That is the platform that we use six through 12 for our individual learning plans. Uh, that's, um, I put that under Title Four, so that's funded under Title Four.
Keep rolling. I don't see any questions going up, so go right ahead.
Uh, part of our, um, the six through 12 literacy grant is that we are continuing to work with our content teachers, not just our ELA teachers. Uh, this year, uh, we worked with Great School Partnership at Thompson. They were our, uh, partner in curriculum and in equity. We are, the social studies department at Thompson wanted to work with Great School Partners this summer to really, um, look at our themes in social studies and really start doing, um, uh, more work around, uh, creating more relevant units in social studies. We just had a vertical meeting with the high school and, um, and making, um, some changes with what the eighth grade is teaching to support, um, the transition into ninth grade. So anyways, um, the contract with Great School Partners would be funded under our secondary comprehensive literacy grant. That is the grant that will also be, um, used to purchase the curriculum adoption for six through 12. So that's what that, um, approval is for summer work this summer with Social Studies Department.
Looks good, no questions, so you can keep going. Uh, Ms. Winslow, do you have a question? Nope. Okay, keep going. Thank you.
And, uh, the next proposal is to continue the partnership that we have with Pell Elementary School in Highlander. Uh, Highlander has been, um, in our district for, um, multiple years. And, uh, this is, um, a program that, uh, the Pell administration really values and wants to continue to work with Highlander, um, for next year. The next, um, request.
Hold on, Dr. Bean, I think Ms. Boatright had a question, so.
Okay. So this is typically an ongoing expense that we have year over year, correct? That we have in our general fund that we're gonna put in ESTR this time, just wanted to ask that. Honestly, Highlander has, um, written many grants, uh, over the years. And they, I have not. And they have not, with the exception of agreeing to make sure that we secure substitute money, which I would put into Title I if it was with Pell, or Title II or Title IV. We've never been charged by Highlander. Okay. So this is the first time we're, we're going into a contract with them that goes beyond the substitute work. I did put money into Title IV and Title I to support any substitute coverage that they would need with this grant. But a lot of this work is coaching and right in the classrooms. So there, there really isn't going to be a tremendous amount of substitute work. And a lot of work with the school, school improvement team.
Great, great, okay, thank you.
The next.
Got a little excited. I thought we were going to get work with the school committee too, but I guess not. All right, keep going. Thanks.
The, the next proposal or request for approval is we wrote a Title IV Summer Personalized Learning Grant. And we wanted to continue our partnership with Sizer with the high school. They'll be doing training with the teachers on our new design for our summer programs. And so that this is a continuation with the partnership with Sizer in the summer. And it's funded under the Title IV grant that we wrote.
And I, just a question similar to Ms. Winslow's, but that, that work will go on with the program this summer to make changes, correct? Or would it be for next summers?
This, this summer, this summer, we, yeah.
Great, thank you.
The next proposal is, our request for approval is to work with Fab Newport. Well, we already work with Fab Newport, but it's to support their increase. Their goal is to service at least 100 Thompson students. And as well as Roger students in their, their summer experience program. And the, the second proposal is to support the gap that they're going to have in order to continue our AmeriCorps program with, with Fab Newport. And, and this proposal would be supported by our ESAR funds.
Go right ahead, Ms. Winslow.
The AmeriCorps program, was that, that's the check and connect? And was that a three-year? Are we in the second or third year of that original contract, I think?
This is, this is the second year.
So we have one more year and then this would be an additional year? Or this is to expand what they're doing next year?
This, this is for next year. So the, there is a gap with, with the funding. And so that's what they're, they're, you know, coming to the, the school district to help them out with that gap.
I do believe too, we have, Dr. Bean, I think we have one of your Fab Lab, actually Ellen Pinnock, whoever sees it. I don't know if you wanted her to share anything.
Yeah, I mean, they've been, they've been a critical partner, I know, for us at Thompson on providing additional supports for students that were really struggling with attendance this year and the whole distance learning. So we set up a pod at MLK and our AmeriCorps students. I mean, our AmeriCorps staff, along with Ellen's guidance and the Fab Newport team have been supporting students over at the MLK.
Thank you. Any, any questions or any other questions or comments on Dr. Bean's reports? All right, so go right, right ahead, Ms. Boatwright.
I think that the AmeriCorps program has been a great program. And I'm just hoping that we can kind of keep some, some data on it so that we can show the increases in participation with the school system as well as effects on absenteeism and other things as well. So I just think it's been a great program and we're not getting some of the data that would make it have some more meat to it. But, thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
So there's a motion and a second to approve action items five point six through five point 11. Seeing no other comment or questions, Ms. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the agreements as presented?
Yes, Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Bean. Next action item is five point, five point one two, five point 12. Request for approval of agreement between Newport Public Schools and EAB. Is there a motion to approve the agreement as presented? Ms. Winslow, seconded by Ms. Boatwright. I just have one question I meant to look up, and it's unusual that you don't see it. EAB stands for what?
I think it's the Educational Assistance Bureau.
Oh, I was just curious. I didn't get a chance to look it up today because it usually says somewhere in the agreement. But this one from start to finish, it's just EAB.
EAB, yes, yeah.
Probably someone's initials.
I was just curious what it was. I didn't know. Any other questions or comments on the agreement? Okay, not seeing any. Ms. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the agreement between Newport Public Schools and EAB?
Sure, Mr. Gomes? Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero.
Thank you. Next action item is five point one three, five point 13. Request for approval of Blackboard Inc. Contract renewal. Is there a motion to approve the agreement as presented this evening? Ms. Winslow, seconded by Ms. Bowlen. Are there any questions on the agreement as presented? Comments? Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
The Advocacy Solutions contract mentions starting up a new website for the district. So will we be able to have Blackboard next year? And also that communications agreement for next year? But then continue into 2022, 2023 with Advocacy Solutions helping us get our new website off the ground? Or is all that going to happen this coming year?
It's all happening this year. The Blackboard is being extended for one year to give us one year to have advocacy working with us as we do a strategic communications plan and to see if they have all the systems that we now need and want for the district. So it's an extension for, it's a one-year contract only.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Ms. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the agreement with Blackboard Inc. as presented?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero.
Very good. The next one is five point one four, five point 14. It's a request for approval of the contract for services between Newport Public Schools and the Rhode Island Student Assistant Services. Is there a motion to approve the contract as presented? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatwright. Are there any questions or comments? Or I'll have Kim, I'm sorry, Dr. Bean, give a brief overview of it. And then we can have questions or comments if there's any.
Sure, we have, currently, we have two drug assistance counselors. One that is at the high school five days a week. Right now at Thompson, we have someone that's there two days a week. They're going to expand the counselor to four days a week at Thompson. Over the past several years, the match has been met by the city council. There was a pot of money, there was a grant that all cities were given to address the substance abuse issue. And that grant has dried up. So the Rhode Island Student Assistant Service, they, they write a lot of grants. And they, they have $77,000 right now that they put towards this, these two positions. And so they're coming to the school department to ask if we will match one of their grants, which is a grant for $28,000. And, you know, they, they came to us. I know we've gone back and forth with Mr. Kamacha to see if they were planning to pursue the city council. And they said that they wanted to come to us first, is my understanding. The email we got from him this afternoon. So we're looking to see if the city, I mean, the school committee would approve the $28,000 match, which would allow us to continue to have the two counselors at the school and also increase the Thompson person by, from two days to four days for 20, 28K.
Dr. Flowers?
Dr. Flowers?
I'm on the Prevention Coalition and because I was copied to the message this afternoon. And I can't really say enough about the two individuals and the role that they and all of the programs really play in trying to keep our young people, you know, on the street narrow and avoiding substance abuse. So it's one way that we who, I say we, you know, educators who are responsible for more than just the book learning really have to keep an eye on the welfare of our young people. And I think, to me, this is an investment, it's a good investment. Hopefully, the Coalition will be able to get, you know, in the future, more grant money. They're, they're searching right now for a new program coordinator and probably get someone who can really reach out and be given the time to even get more funding for people of this, with this kind of expertise. I just saw a message, actually, the people who are in those positions, they're not teachers, I believe. And correct me if I'm totally off, but they're individuals who are probably trained, educated in that particular discipline of counseling the young people.
Alrighty.
I believe this is what it is.
Thank you. Any other?
I'm getting messages back and forth here. I can't really address it. I can't because I don't know the answer.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? I don't see any or hear any. So, Ms. Nash, could we have a roll call vote to approve the contract between Newport Public Schools and the Rhode Island Student Assistant Services?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero.
Okay, thank you. The next, the next action item is five point one four, five point, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Five point one five, five point one six, five point one seven. We have to pull those as the agreements have not been finalized through, through downs in the various vendors that we don't have agreements finalized to approve. So that'll be held for a future meeting. So that's five point one five, five point one six, and five point one seven. That leads us to the next action item. Five point one eight is a request to determine the contribution to the Pell Tech Fund. As you know, in October, we approved a pledge in the amount of $32,750 to get the Pell Technology Fund to their threshold, to their, I believe it was a $1 million threshold in contributions. And we said the contribution would be determined at the meeting in June. That's what we're doing. And I believe the Finance Subcommittee has a recommendation. So I'm going to go to Ms. Boatwright, who I believe can.
Right, we're recommending to do this this year because we said in, when we put this forward is if we have a reserve, we should be able to do it. And because we do have a reserve account, we think that it's appropriate to pay it at this point in time.
So I'm going to use that suggestion from the Finance Subcommittee to say, Ms. Boatwright has made a motion that we approve $32,750 to the Pell Technology Fund as our contribution for this year, as pledged. Is there a second, Ms. Bowlen, Mrs. Bowlen? Thank you. Any, Ms. Bowlen, go right ahead.
Yes, I just want to point out that even though we're making a contribution, this is a one-time contribution. It's actually going to take us over, or the fund, over a million dollars. That's how they came up with that number. Because that was always the intention, to have a million dollars and then to never spend the principal, but only ever, you know, spend each year the amount of money that is raised on the account. And I just want to say that, that thanks to, you know, the efforts of Dr. Powers, you know, this has been an incredible thing for, you know, for Pell School. And, you know, I think we're all pleased that we were able to help it go over a million. And just so you know, this year, they already donated $40,000 to help Pell School make upgrades in technology.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Not seeing any, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the contribution of $32,750 to the Pell Technology Fund?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero.
The next action item is five point one nine. It's a request for in-person school committee meetings. This is sort of not really necessary at this time as things have unfolded quite quickly. And it's my plan at least, and hopefully we move that way, that our next meeting, which would be the August regular meeting, would be once again held in person in the Pell Cafeteria. I don't know what we call that, but Cafeteria, I guess. So it would be, you know, not really prudent to vote on the request for in-person school committee meetings because I believe our next one will be back to normal and in-person at Pell School. Ms. Winslow?
I just have a question. I, I wanted to know if we're going to continue offering like a dial-in or a webinar option for parents, community, et cetera, to join? How, you know, I know the city does a good job, sort of, they've got people in the council chamber and people at home. And, and everything can be, everything is live streamed essentially. Can we do that?
Go ahead, Dr. Jermaine.
Director Young is actually working on that. He has met with several consultants. He's also taking in different proposals to look at the costs. So we are looking at that, not only for the public, but also, I will selfishly say, for some of my staff members. So they are able to remote in and not have to be in the cafeteria all night and then back at work at six the next day. And some of them do travel, as we know. So Director Young has been working on this and we're hoping to have something fairly soon to share with all of you, as well as the costs. And he has been having lots of conversations with Jim O'Halloran, I think that's his name, over at the city. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Some of the good that comes out of COVID.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, uh, Ms. Boatwright.
Yeah, I'd like to know if, if we as, um, members of the school committee would be able to do that if we're on vacation or something like that too. So I wanted to bring that up and for discussion or whether that's already a viable alternative.
My guess would be that if anybody can remote in, I believe you could remote in like we've done on the Zoom meetings and be similar to Ms. Bowlen who's out in California. So, no, I believe it would be, it would fulfill that too, I believe. I don't think there's a, Mr. Calvin could correct me, but I don't think there's a legal obligation that you're in the room. I, I don't know.
I think that would be appropriate based on the technical arrangements you've set up. There's no reason why it wouldn't be.
So I would think that would be another benefit of it to look into.
I just wanted to make sure that that was, if, if a vote needed to be taken or anything like that, we would be able to do it, but.
You can plan your trip now, Ms. Boatwright.
Still raise your hand.
I can tell you about all the vacations I have planned now.
Care for what you wish for.
Yeah.
I don't know if I want to go to Tahiti and log into a school committee meeting.
Exactly.
Anyhow, uh, so that's, we should be live and in person come, uh, come August. So no need for that.
Very first in-person meeting.
Yes, be great to be normal. So five point twenty, as I said earlier, we do have a, uh, the recommendation from the sub, finance subcommittee that we hold on item five twenty, which is, uh, request for approval of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget until, uh, the city council vote tomorrow evening. Uh, and I believe we are going to include that in a special meeting that we'll probably be setting up for, I believe it was Thursday, the seventeenth. So, uh, that's a tentative plan to do that and another couple of other items at a special meeting on June seventeenth. So that gets us through our action items and leads us to, uh, a discussion. And the first discussion item is six point one, school building committee update. And I'm going to look to, I don't know, Ms. Boatwright or Ms. Bowlen, go right ahead.
I think we have Kyle Lantini.
Yes, we do.
Official update. We can move him over. And then we may want to.
He is rejoining right now as a panelist.
Thank you.
I'll just ask, I know, Kyle, I don't know if there's anybody else that we want to move in for this segment that might be in the audience, but Mrs. Nash could, or Kyle could tell us or Mrs. Nash, but if anybody else needs to be moved over, they're welcome.
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Just me tonight. So.
Mr. Chair, may I just, sorry for interrupting. Can we just, I dismiss Colonel Corbin. I don't know, he knows he may leave and he may have prom things going on too.
Oh, I'm not sure. I've seen, oh, here he is.
I'm here. Not tonight. I'm good.
Just in case. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for recognizing the cadets. I appreciate your leadership.
Oh, thank you. No, we appreciate all you guys do. So, thank you. Okay, so if Kyle is all set, we can proceed with the, uh, school building committee update.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Update on Pell first, we had our schematic design submitted to RIDE through their online portal last week. And we have a review meeting set up with them at the end of this week to review the schematic design. And then our design development phase, uh, is still on track to be presented to the school building committee next week. That will come after our RIDE meeting at the end of this week and we'll incorporate any of those comments as well into that, uh, design development update. And, uh, we had a neighborhood meeting last week for Pell where we provided them a, a project update, showed them the, the most up-to-date floor plans and site plans from schematic design. And we, we again took questions and comments from the public. So, so that's really where we're at right now with Pell. And then moving on to Rogers, we are ongoing in the schematic design phase, still, still kind of early. But the space programming of the new building continues to be vetted out with SLAM and the school administration and other stakeholders. Our commissioning agent for the mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems and the building envelope is still on track to be recommended to the school building committee next week. And, uh, SLAM will be presenting their next progress update in the schematic design phase at the June twenty-eighth school building committee meeting. So not the next one, but, uh, the one following that. And that, that wraps up the update for tonight. A quick update. Uh, so if there's any questions, we'll, we'll take them.
Ms. Boatwright, go right ahead.
I, the one thing that, um, has happened and since the last is we've postponed the Rogers, um, S D, I believe, Kyle, maybe cut into August. So you might want to mention that.
Yeah. So the original target date for a schematic design, uh, presentation and approval through the school building committee was in July and we've pushed that out into early August or mid-August. So a little bit more time in that, but that's important to get that initial schematic design right and fully vetted and make sure we're heading in the right direction. Uh, and that will, that will still keep us on track. So just a little delay in the, in the, uh, presentation with the school building committee and all that, but we're still, we're still on track heading in the right direction.
Thank you. Any, uh, go right ahead, Ms. Winslow.
Actually, I, I don't know if this is a question for Kyle or for, um, Becky or Louisa. You're working on a new school building, building committee website, correct?
Yes.
Or I don't know if I should say school building committee website, but a website or, you know, and not, I just was curious to know what the timeline is on.
Well, we have sent a, uh, revised, it's like into its fourth version to, um, New Wave, which we have selected as a vendor. We are, um, pretty much, we, for them to start, they needed, we needed a contract and so on. So we're right at the final end of that. So hopefully we can start by the end of this week is my hope. And, um, so once we, um, probably at one of our special meetings, we can give you a better update just on the timing. We were shooting for July first. I don't know if that's going to be viable at this point in time, but we are still praying. We're going to hope to try to meet that or be as close as possible. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty. Well, thanks, uh, for taking the time, Kyle, this evening and updating us.
Of course. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
You too. Thank you. Take care.
Kyle.
And the next one is, uh, TMS principal update. I'm, I'm not quite sure if there's some information, Dr. Jermaine, to update or we met him at a last special meeting.
Yes, um, uh, Mr. Barrios has already been to the district quite a few times already. He's visited the school. He met in person with the PTO, um, president and others on the PTO. Actually, he bumped into some of them afterwards and he wound up having, I think, a meal with them across the street, one of our local, um, venues. Uh, so things are going very well. He's already started PowerPoints. He's collecting data. He's starting to create a plan for when he, um, starts officially on July first. But as I'm sharing with you, he's been very busy already. He's looking forward to, um, coming to Newport. He's very excited. I know he's also going to join Dr. Bian and the TMS crew on their last day this year. So, um, we're looking forward to, um, him joining the team. It's, uh, it's been fun. And I know Ms. Nash is setting up, uh, meetings for those who just want to have a one-to-one or just meet him online right now or whatever. So, um, we'll do that as well. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Any questions from the school committee for Dr. Jermaine on that update? I don't see any. So thank you. That gets us through our discussion items. Uh, that leads us to, uh, the consent agenda, seven point one, seven point two. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, Dr. Flowers? Seconded by Ms. Winslow. There any questions on seven point one or seven point two for any of the staff? I see some head shakes. No, so that's good. Don't see any. Ms. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes.
Hi.
Ms. Bowlen.
Hi.
Ms. Boatwright.
Hi.
Dr. Flowers.
Sorry. Hi.
And Winslow.
Hi.
Thank you. It's five zero.
I won't miss the Zoom meetings, trust me. It's funny, sometimes people concentrate, so you can't tell if they're frozen or if they're trying to unmute and concentrating on the button. So it's hard to tell whether anything's happening. It's like you have to, have to unmute and say, wait a minute, I'm coming. Anyhow, that gets us through our consent agenda, monthly correspondence. We have, uh, several correspondents, uh, up, uh, reports on activities of the school building committee and the wellness subcommittee meeting notes. Is there a motion to approve the correspondence as presented? Ms. Boatwright, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Any questions or comments on the correspondence? Seeing none, uh, Ms. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to accept the correspondence as presented this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes.
Hi.
Ms. Bowlen.
Hi.
Ms. Boatwright.
Hi.
Dr. Flowers.
Hi.
Ms. Winslow.
Hi.
Thank you. Five zero.
Alrighty, terrific. We'll move along to, into section nine. Reports from superintendent and staff. And as usual, the first two are the expenditure and revenue reports and the Newport Public Schools restricted, restricted grant report. Mr. Gunsavos is here, of course, to answer any questions or comments, uh, that we may have. Ms. Gunsavos, I know you send the correspondence. Anything you want to add or just looking for any questions we may have?
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. I don't have anything specific to add unless there are questions that would, uh, require an answer.
Sure. Go right ahead, Ms. Winslow.
I just realized it's a silly question because I have like the backup from the action item on the budget and I printed that out and then like looking at the changes. But if we're going to have a special meeting on it, then we're going to get new backup and I can ask them then. So never mind.
You can update your question when you get an update.
Exactly. It's going to change three more times between now and next week. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure I saw, you know, where items will be adjusted. That's all I'm looking for.
Yes. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Gunsavos on nine point one or nine point two? Okay, thank you. Not seeing any. Thank you. Uh, that gets us to nine point three, which is the enrollment demographics and homeless reports. Uh, Dr. Jermaine, are there any questions on those reports as presented, uh, this evening in our backup? Anything Dr. Jermaine would like to add?
Not at this time. We're just continually trying to track all our children and make sure we know where they all are.
Oh, go right ahead, Ms. Winslow.
Real quick, I've seen, I've seen it advertised in the paper, you know, enroll, enroll kids. Does anybody take advantage of that? The early bird or do they all wait till the last minute? I mean, do we have kids enrolling in kindergarten, new kids? Any idea if it will, that number will spike like we expect?
Ms. Meeks has been enrolling, uh, students. Um, and I do not have a count as of now. So, um, I will get one for the next, uh, even for, uh, I'll try to start getting those for our, uh, my weekly updates to you. They'll start signing up. She has had sign-ups and military families have also sent ahead as well.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Boatwright, go right ahead.
Yeah, I did want to ask Dr. Jermaine to please qualify. Um, I know it's been in the papers about the Newport, um, graduation rate, but that's not the Rogers graduation rate. So I was hoping you could clarify the difference between the two and not in this report, but it's.
I haven't seen anything in the papers, but, uh, kids count, uh, did come out with their yearly report. And I think people get confused when they see the, uh, it shows the districts. And we only have one high school. So when, uh, people read the kids count report, they think that is the high school. And actually, when they report out on the district, they're reporting out on all our students that are, um, either attending Rogers High School or in, or are in out-of-district placements or are in special programs, et cetera. So it's much more than Rogers High School. Rogers High School did see a dip, but, um, that is not reflective of, uh, the, what's in kids count is not reflective of, um, our graduation rate. Uh, Rogers did dip to, I believe it's about seventy-four percent. Which some, as the Wall Street Journal just, um, over the weekend had an article that a lot of high schools have either stalled or fall. They said stall or fall for high school graduations this year, uh, rates because of COVID. So I'll have more details with you as we do data dives and, um, be able to report out more detail on.
And we'll, we'll be having, uh, I know there's at least one member who wants to have a workshop or a discussion when we do get the data done. So we're just waiting on some data and we'll be having a workshop on that subject. Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, if anything has come out of the pandemic, like you say, once in a while, something good comes out of something really bad. The public awareness, not that there aren't many who are aware, but public awareness of the impact that our teachers have on the students every day when they're present. That the students themselves opt to be present and families get their kids into school. Obviously, when it couldn't be done, when you could not be physically present, that's, there, there has to be a fallout from that. But the, even the move in many other parts of the country too, to get the kids all back into school. And as I say, the one, a, a, a good thing that's come out of this is to say, hey, these teachers really have a tremendous influence on the present and the future of our youngsters. I hope people are understanding that.
I have no doubt that that's another benefit of COVID is the appreciation for teachers in the lives of, uh, families and the children. So I think everybody has realized that.
And all the other personnel too, who, you know, the, the classroom teachers and all of the other personnel who work with our kids. And, and it's just, uh, and you hope that the appreciation continues.
Yes.
Structure of school is, is vital, you know? Even strong students struggle on remote learning. I know that personally.
No, that's true. All right. Any other questions, comments on the enrollment demographics and homeless reports? I don't see any or hear any. Uh, the facility update, Mr. Young, unfortunately, who normally is the trooper through all of our meetings, has had a family commitment this evening. So he's not with us. If you do have any questions, I'll encourage you to email Mr. Young and I'm sure he'll respond to you. He's very responsive. So that's the facility update. Nine point five is distance learning, in-person learning report. Any questions for that, uh, information as presented for Dr. Jermaine? I, I, I just have, I just do have one, uh, question on that regard and I, I think, I know you, we, we have a pretty good plan. Is there, is the plan been finalized for the coming fall as far as, uh, the intentions of students and families are dealing with, you know, families that may not feel comfortable in the fall? Or are we putting out a plan to encourage families to fully participate in school in the fall?
So, um, we have put out, uh, just this past, the past couple of weeks, we have put out a survey, Mr. Gomes, to see if there is any interest. And actually, we will know more on Monday. That data is coming in and we'll take a look at if there is any interest in a distance learning academy for our students and some of our families. So we have reached out. We're trying and encouraging. we have reached out. We're trying and encouraging in-person learning as much as possible. But just in case you may have those that for whatever reasons, they may feel more comfortable.
I've just come across several articles online about many districts having a very high request to stay out of out of schools. And I just wondered if we're encouraging the in-person in school. I think Ms. Winslow, I think, was agreeing, but if do you have a comment, Ms. Winslow?
Oh, I mean, that was I don't know how you're going to do this. But really, I mean, if the school district feels very strongly that the student would be better off a person, how we can accommodate, you know, if they really want to stay home, but it's just like because they're not interested in school, they want to stay home. And I don't, I don't want to see that. But I I do want to recognize that it's it is beneficial for some kids. So you know, how we draw, maybe it's going to be like creating an IEP for every kid now. This could, it could be a lot of work, but it really, yeah, encouraging them to be in school as much as possible. I hope the district, I guess, is prepared to advocate for that as hard as it might be.
Go right ahead, Ms. Boatright.
I just wanted to go back to what you just said, Mr. Gomes, is that because I do have some family who teach in other communities and then they haven't been in school all of this last year. And there's a lot of hesitancy, I think, in those school districts nationwide, really, because they've been out for so long. And so they're kind of more frightened. But but I did want to ask, because I know in the past, it's been discussed, even when like a child is sick or unable to come home, come to school for family reasons. Dr. Jermaine, is that going to be possible for students who really can't come in because of family situations that they might be able to add into classrooms in the future?
I don't, I don't believe at this point in time, we've we're at the very preliminary stages of this discussion. But I don't believe at this time we are looking and learner, and they're not able to come in for a day or two to zoom in. That is not what we are discussing at this point in time. What we're discussing is it's kind of a you're in or you're not in. Right. That other gray area needs further discussion.
Right. I just want to bring it up only because it was brought up by a student on a panel. You remember that couple, three, I think it was two to three years ago, and the student did, you know, she's she her comment was if she could have, she would have, but she it wasn't an option. So I don't know how frequently that is, but it was it was eye opening to me to hear that comment from the from the student. So so anyhow, thank you.
Very preliminary right now. So maybe in a few more weeks, I can bring back more concrete answers.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the distance distance learning, in-person learning information? That brings us to 9.6, District Goals 2021, 2022. Any questions for Dr. Jermaine on the District Goals Report? Not seeing it. Dr. Jermaine, go right ahead.
I did want to share with everyone, this is the time and we need to reflect and look at a new strategic plan for the next three years. So that's on the drawing board over here. And we're trying to backward map it and the dates and whatnot. But we're going, I just wanted to bring that up, that we are going to have to, you know, ramp up, maybe do at least a thin strategic plan with specific measurable goals. And that will incorporate, you know, what we've just been through and how we go back to school as far as what each level will be focusing on going forward.
Dr. Flowers, you muted, Dr. Flowers.
Oh, dread. Okay. Are you looking at the same format? That seems to work well.
Right. I forgot to look at a little bit more. I haven't really had the time to sit down, digest it and actually share it with the leadership team and with our teacher leaders to take a look at that. But the plan we have right now is very thorough and
Yeah.
And does focus all the way from PK through high school. I turned this way because everything's right there on the strategic plan for me. But we do need to look at specific measurable goals, I think will be helpful for our teachers and for administrators and myself. So especially in the foundational skills, math and literacy.
That's it.
Ms. Boatright, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, because I know the last time there was a lot of community involvement in that strategic plan. Is that the plan again? Or are you looking at it? So maybe you could just, is there going to be like a kickoff to try to bring people in? Maybe you could just, or I don't know, I just wanted to understand how you're planning to
Planning to plan?
How you're going to incorporate community into the strategic plan?
As we did in the last time, we'll, you know, we'll put out an all call. And we also also reach out to specific people and partners that we'd like to have as part of that process and on the team. And we also have to look at, a lot of people need to know time commitment. Last year, it was very predictable. Last time was very predictable. We had it on a certain day of the week for 90 minutes and or, you know, two hours if we had to, but we'll we'll map all that out. And that's what I mean. That's just the logistics. We haven't gotten those all down and mapped out.
Right. I just want to ask a couple of people in.
Definitely. Community partners, students. We need students on it as well.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? All right, good segue into 9.7, which is superintendent's update on partnerships, collaborations and personnel. Any questions on the that batch of reports as presented this evening? Okay, I see a lot of nose and head shakes. Dr. Jermaine, go right ahead.
I just wanted to give a very recent update at Salve Regina University today. The chair and I were very fortunate. Thank you to Ms. Neary to allow us to meet Dr. Armstrong, Kelly Armstrong, today. And I'm very excited. I think it was a great meeting this morning and we're off to a very good start and very exciting. We want to start like in July, August. So we'll we'll update you more when we have more details, but it was very positive for our students and community. So thank you to the chair for inviting me to the meeting and Ms. Neary for helping facilitate that.
Hopefully, yes, it was a very productive and very good start. So hopefully there'll be some more good news as we move about in the next coming week. So I'm excited. Ms. Boatright, go right ahead.
Just the one other thing, I don't think it's been in the press yet, but I was excited to hear it about Sale Newport is doing both fourth and fifth grade next year because the fourth graders last year. Is that right?
Well, it was a secret.
I didn't say that. My apologies.
Okay. I'll call Brad, I'll call Brad Reed right after this.
Okay, everybody, nobody heard that.
Heard what? All right. So let's
Didn't say that.
Let's move on to the suggested meeting dates and agenda items.
Yes.
10.1, there's quite a slew of meetings there catching up to today. We have so next one is Thursday, June 10 is Rogers High School graduation at Topa Field. There is Monday, June 14 is a Wellness Committee meeting. Monday, June 14 is a Newport School Building Committee meeting. Thursday, June 17 is a Newport School Committee Special Meeting. It'll be building projects and budget, as we mentioned earlier. Wednesday, June 23 Policy Subcommittee. Monday, June 28 is a Newport School Building Committee and a possible June 29 placeholder for a School Committee Special Meeting as a result of the School Building Committee on the 28th. So those are the suggested meeting dates and dates so far. Ms. Winslow, I see your hand up. Go right ahead.
Um, there's the subgroup of the Health and Wellness Subcommittee that is going to focus on mental health. And I just set that up for Tuesday, June 15. But it's very small. There's only three of us so far. But I figure I'll let you know since and if anybody wants to join, I will include them. You can email me. Or ask, kind of get in touch with me. Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Any other suggested meeting dates or agenda items? I think we've covered them most this evening. There are no executive session items this evening. So the next motion would be, next item is adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order. Ms. Winslow, seconded by Ms. Boatright. And just a simple voice vote, all those in favor to adjourn signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all for attending tonight and your participation.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for everyone for staying with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky, I see that that normal afternoon breeze is kicking up there.